I'm just wondering, I understand that students will be direct to their classrooms for those 25 minutes. What will we have in the future? What will it be doing?
Actually, Dr. Burford, you should have been with the principals. And right now, there's a lag in starting time. Some students arrive and final students arrive. And essentially, they're doing organizational kinds of things, getting settled in, you know, maybe looking over their homework. Dr. Burford, do you have more specifics from your conversation?
One of the intentions when we looked at the schedule and transportation was to not change anything that existed today, so we'd be no different.
Okay. My question is not, well, yeah, there'll be a kindergarten or a upper, so I don't have a full understanding of how this, I mean, it feels like a lot of time, especially for 25, to be occupied.
I would be surprised if you drop off your kindergarten at 8:20, which is your only time it's going to take a while for him or her to get to the classroom, get his coat off, settle. You know, the older they get, obviously, the less transition time they need in the morning.
But my concern with that piece is how is the instruction time not going to differ? I mean, I have to wonder that if there's some teachers that, you know, may have had kids, you know, fish on the homework or getting kids starting from science, or even if the students are being asked to do some reading, how is that equitable? How is that fair? Something is filling the class, and other people have an opportunity to gain a classroom, maybe a few questions answered at homework, maybe you have an opportunity to practice reading. I mean, it doesn't seem like that's something that's ethical. The instruction time doesn't seem fair, doesn't seem to make sense, and how that will work with the two different, with some kids being on top of that, and others is already in the class.
Well, we have to consider, as we heard in the presentation, we have to consider not knowing who's going to be driving your students. And we have to consider not knowing how many students could be on the bus, so because we won't know that until you actually do it. So given the spectrum of what the possibilities would be, we've limited that it will only be the same situations that exist today. So that we do have parents, sometimes unfortunately, that will bring their students and drop them off really early. So I would say those students do have an opportunity in school that other students may not have. Our teachers will not start instruction, will not do anything that would cheap, have a late comer to coming in, because instruction will start until all the students are there. Just the flip side of that, in our experience sadly, there are also students who simply arrive as much as 10 minutes later. At that point, we do have to start instruction. So we try to keep it as close to the variations that exist right now. Another thing I want to mention, that when Smalley was talking about the length of time and the difference between the first arrivals and the last, that's the longest possibility, so that there are, you know, that there's, depending on where you are in the route, you could be the last one on, for example, in one neighborhood, we bring you right to that school, and then be the first ones over to the other school. So there are a lot of things that we're considering in that. So that's why the rate was shared, the rates, only for certain people.
Thank you. My next question and concern, as the primary concern, is the growing class size. Initially, in the fall, when this was discussed, a few board members had stated, when they voted for this plan, that the class size would maintain smaller class size. We see that in 2013, 2014, we have class sizes of 26 and 27. I can't help but wonder how the students will suffer from this. I can't imagine learning will be maintained, as it is now with groups of 20, 21 students, when it will be 26 and 27. I'm just wondering what programs have been looked at, what support will be in place for these students that begin to struggle, being that they now have 27 students in their class, both 20 and 21? And it's a cost of these additional programs, and I'm speaking specifically of AIS programs. I imagine, you know, there will be a handful of things that have more difficult living in classes so much larger. Especially there's, I believe, a sample in fourth grade, there's 14 kids, both of which will be 27 or 28, and this is a huge jump. And the cost of these programs, or have these increases programs been looked at? There's more than kids that begin to struggle?
A couple of answers to start with. This slide is from the presentation made on October 3rd. And at that point, what I had done was given the board essentially two ranges. If you had all grades at four sections, all grades at five sections, to show the class sizes in those ranges, and the cost range was done in that same scenario. And it was mentioned at the time that the board, in future discussions, would have to decide the number of sections in each grade level. So there are some, and not viewed directly, but there have been some who've said, "This is disingenuous, because we did not talk about class sizes of this number," and we certainly did. As the board makes decisions, we'll know better. Now, the only thing decided at this point by the board in terms of class sections is for next year, and that is where they have five sections in every grade, five fifth, I have to pick in reverse for a second, and four sections in fifth grade. And the reason for that is that small class that you're speaking of in Nassau, which is actually 12 students at this point. That class would be going, if it stayed at a grade level, or if it stayed in a neighborhood, if it went to grade level, they would still be doubling in size, because 12 is just not realistic in this economy. You can't justify a class of 12 looking after the tax gap. Board still has, yes, decisions about future years. So for next year, we can tell you that they've decided on five sections everywhere in the fifth grade, and those class sizes are very favorable. They will still be considering future years.
Can you ask me something else? I'm just wondering if programs have been looked at? I mean, AIS programs. AIS, I think, basically, I think so much.
It's really not quite a class size. To tell you the truth, first of all, we had class sizes very similar to this. There was at least one class recently of 25. And I wouldn't necessarily say we didn't look at it, but I don't know that the AIS was so different. The class performed as well or better, actually, when we did look at this, than some smaller class sized. It could have been a coincidence, it could have been just a particular issue with students. But there's no direct correlation that says if you have more kids in a class, it will require more AIS. It's something we would have to look at, certainly. I mean, I understand your concern for it, but at this time, we do have more than nine AIS providers across the elementary district. Neither is teachers alone, we also have a couple of TAs who work with AIS. And really, it's based on specifics. In fact, there's a presentation on March 12th about the AIS program. So if you could attend that, I think that would be helpful in understanding some of it too.
I can't help, I mean, I've been working in education for more than 10 years, and I know there will be some students that struggle, you know, depending on their needs, depending on their ability levels. Like it will happen, bigger class sizes make it difficult for some kids, not all kids, but some. My other question, and again, this is for the board members, I'm just wondering, when we revisit the superintendent's contract in July, I'm trying to understand, that's a three-year contract, but it's revisited every July to make any changes that have been requested about by Carter's board? Is that correct? It's revisited every July?
Yes.
To discuss.
So yes, that has been, because we don't put reasons in for the entire contract. So it is kind of more, we did this year, this is the first year, then there's also another one that changed a little bit.
And somehow, it's going to be changed, depending on if you have requests or you have requests. I'm just wondering if it could be possible, I don't want to be stuck on this car allowance, but that seems to be a piece that's hard for us parents who are state programs, cut from our kids, and class sizes are growing. It feels like such a luxury in this economy. $400 a month, and 12 months, which is almost $5,000 a year. Such a significant amount of money that can be given, the books that will be required once this grade level plan happens. Over three years, that's $14,000, over five years, it's almost $25,000. That covers DA's salary. It may feel like it's small enough, but if you look at the numbers, I think it feels like a luxury that may or may not be necessary. I just ask that maybe that's something that can be looked at, maybe to show support for the parents and the community and our kids, if that's something that can be discussed. Or if Dr. Powell is willing to say, you know, this is not something that I need to take right now. I know that this is a busy daytime for everyone, you know, in my way of supporting the families and students in this district, and showing my support in this district, maybe this is something that you all can think about. I think, you know, providing trust and showing that we're working together, it's just maybe one small thing that can be done on everybody's part.
Just the comment was directed to us. But all contracts, I think, need to be looked at.
I agree.
So I don't disagree with you on that. And as far as Dr. Powell, I mean, I think everybody knows that, I think it was two years ago, that you donated back the entire raise that was already agreed upon last year, I think it was, yeah, given back. So, and I will also say the administration gave back last year, the teachers gave back last year. So it has, you know, people in, employees in the school district have been very cooperative in that respect, so.
And I think people appreciate that. I think it's just this one small thing, it just feels like such a luxury, such a different package. My last, and very general question.
Can I just stop, just for one second? Can I just say the car? Because I keep seeing that over and over and over again. Yes, and I understand $400, but you also have to look at it another way. If we, as a district, have to provide that car, we're also paying for the gas for that car, we're providing for the maintenance on that car, we're providing the insurance on that car. So at what point, and that thing's just going to be sitting there, which does work, sure we get up to go to all near to whatever district, whatever employee needs a car, that's where we're saving the money, for the tolls and for various things like that. That's where, it may not matter up to $400, I don't know what the exact numbers are, I've never, I don't remember when the last time we actually had a car for the superintendent that we funded, like years ago.
Previous superintendent.
That was always provided to the superintendent. So does it wash? I couldn't tell you how much a customer's share of car, you know, as far as the school district, or the maintenance on a vehicle that's not going to be a brand new vehicle. So is the $400 a luxury, or is it just, you know, does it wash out in the end? So also keep that in mind.
I just have a question.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just putting that out there, because I was getting numerous, numerous emails about it. And that's, you know, you have to look at it both ways. Do we provide the car, or do we just, okay, here, just take that, we don't have to worry about your tolls and your other dollars?
Well, perhaps calculation of your own mileage, you know, she can log all her miles, and my papers.
But then, I understand that, but then you also have to calculate that, then that's all up for audit. It's so much easier to just say, here.
Yeah, but I don't know the degree here, I think we'll need to talk about that.
I understand what you're saying.
My last, just a very general question, and I don't know if I'm the only one who's confused about this, but it seems not to make sense that you voted two months ago on a plan that's being presented tonight, and then there's no more further vote. So how is it that you voted two months ago on something that you didn't have full understanding of?
Two months ago was to go ahead and formulate the detail. This, it would have been silly to spend the hundreds of hours of time and effort to go through this kind of detail on something that the board would have said, "No."
But then you don't know what you're voting for, and that's not making sense. How do you make an informed vote when you don't know what you're voting for?
I'm voting for grade level schools, I'm voting for some of the concepts I said before. This is the implementation plan, it's not a plan you need to vote on. This is, this is the board direction. The administration now comes back with the details on how to make that happen.
Right, but the numbers, that, the savings that we're seeing?
That was there when we voted.
Not in secret.
Pretty much, three-year, I mean, we can show it to you.
I mean, I'm speaking a double, like, maybe, maybe some of the savings were listed, I mean, there were still a lot of unknowns at that time. I'm just having a hard time understanding, how, you voted on something without having a poll? That's affecting hundreds and hundreds of people. 800 families are saying, "Please, think about this, don't, consider not doing it." You voted on it, and then you got this comprehensive, it just doesn't make sense.
It wouldn't have made sense to me to go through this comprehensive plan. It was a close vote, it wasn't something that was a shoo-in by any stretch of the imagination. So until we were sure we were going to go for it, you just can't ask for this kind of time and effort to go ahead and put together this kind of detail.
I think, I may be alone, but it just doesn't make any sense.
Hi, I'm Mary Sawyer, and I'm with Woodcar, and I'd just like to thank the board for looking out at the long-term future of our district, a small, special district that I think is especially vulnerable in ways, and it depends on a small population of students. I thank you for looking and taking a long-term view of fiscal soundness of how the district's being run, and that you allow a plan to afford flexibility in dealing with fiscal matters. My own kids are starting to age out of the Sackville district, but I can say all of the people who have kids who are starting early on, you have a lot to look forward to. And I can tell you that the education that your kids are going to get, based on, even on this CHA plan, this is what comes to pass, is a lot of very, very special teacher, very high standards. Our district has always stood for high excellence, and I think by joining our kids together before the middle school, there are a lot of advantages in doing that. And so I think that ultimately, if you want middle school to soar, to thrive, and by joining kids early on, I think that you're going to be able to get that level of community that you need to boost middle school, where those kids' heads are in a completely different place than academics. And I know that this is a lot of pressure, and a lot of teachers who are in the eyes, work very hard for our students to succeed. And so from what I can tell, from hearing people's comments, obviously, everyone cares about students in this district, even when they're not our home kids, we care about the students in this district. Not even to do with the price of our houses that's affected by the reputation of parents who stand behind their students in this district, but just because I think there's people who moved in, back here, and moved here, because they care about education in particular. For myself, I moved purposely into this district because, for me, it was a district where it had a lot of diversity economically, it had diversity culturally, racially. My kids have benefited from that. And so I would hope that, I think that this plan that is, I've been thinking about and wish, and if I've been hearing about concerns about, I feel that there's a little strong benefit to benefits in being able to look at the grades and concentrate the principal's attention on the grade spans in the school. I think that once parents go through that change, if it does come to pass, that parents are going to stand behind their kids, it's going to be a very strong, continue to be a very strong school community. And I think that the kids are, once the parents and the kids and every, you know, we go through this kind of rough spot, that is going to ultimately be very good for our district. But I do, there are a lot of vulnerable school districts, there are a lot of talk, again, I know across the river where I work, plans on dissolving school districts, enlarging them, changing them, because there is a point when you can't maintain a school district based on the shrinking tax base, the shrinking enrollments. And so I think it's really important that we have a district and a school board just looking out for that long-term view of our very, very special and enrollable school district. Thank you.
Oh, I'm Cindy, and I'm in Luchsee, and I never rehappened. I have a five-year-old at Ulrich's Hill, Hagan, and I have a three-year-old at Peninter, St. Martin's, Denver. Basically up here because I know that it's controversial, this grade level school, and it does happen, and my kids are split, because they're three years apart, we'll make it work. But the sections is why I'm really up here. Could you put that slide back up, these seven sections of four and sections of five? Because I am a fifth grade teacher, I've been teaching fifth grade for 13 years, and my largest class size was 29 kids my first year, and it was, every day was a struggle. I haven't had more than 23 kids in a district four times the size in 12 years. So when I look at those numbers of 25 in kindergarten, if you go down to four sections ever, it just brings anxiety to me. Because I know that a teacher cannot service 25 kids the way that she can service 20. And I know that those big test scores will show up. So I just am up here as a parent and educator to please, we keep those numbers down. I came, my heart, I sold my house, I didn't know, I didn't want my children to go and give away. So I came here, and I'm just, I'm in a lot of anxiety over those numbers being up there, because we could see in my car, where my kids could go out in the street. I mean, my husband happened to be in Burb, another family built here, because it was a prestigious place, and the numbers were low, and I wanted my kids to be in the best place that they're just getting. So please, just keep that in mind.
Hi, my name is Mary, I do my Anthony drive, my name is Luffy, and I'm a proud Nassau parent. And the crowds who stay from the Nassau teachers that are here are wonderful, they are amazing. I have three children, one is already graduated since Todd, who's from Mount Shear. He got fours on all his state exams, he has a 97% average, I tell you, so he was named student of the month first year he was here. I do that modicum to the teachers at Nassau, which I'm sorry that that, that.
Stop, yeah, no, stop, you're looking at right now.
Well, you allowed her to insult my teachers. You allowed her to insult my teachers, so you know what? That's what she is. Okay, you don't insult my teachers, okay? Okay, all right, all right. Okay, but you need to respect Nassau parents, okay? Everybody up here, I'm a first Nassau parent, I agree that's spoken. Okay, you let her degrade my kids' teachers, my children, and you allow that to happen, and I will not stand by that you do that. And shame on you for allowing it to happen. Teachers are good teachers at Nassau. I'm here to hopefully just straight back, who's one of the best teachers in the history of, you don't have to vote, because she's one of those who cut from this.
Well, my kids went to Nassau, I know how, but they, I don't have a chance.
Okay, well, you should let somebody from this audience talk badly about a school or a teacher or the students, okay? Because I'm not going to sit back and listen to that, okay? My students, three different children, three academically different kids, okay? They all get the best education from Nassau. My concern is, these numbers are hot. I was a parent that was affected by the first grade class at Nassau, which I'm sure the board said to do it, to put the kids together to make one first grade. That was a disaster, okay? And that was putting, I think, 22 or 23 kids in one classroom, with one teacher, no eight. Now, we talk about kids like they're all the same. You have your highly educated kids, you have your normal kids, and then you have your kids that struggle. The kids that struggle are going to get more attention, the kids that are highly educated are the ones that are pushed aside because they get it. You've taken away the richness, which I think is horrible to take away that, for the kids that really challenged the kids that were highly educated. I believe in richness, come back. But, so to have, and then when second grade came back the following year, you put it back in different classrooms, you had two classrooms. So obviously, you know it didn't work for that first grade, so to see these numbers up there is, is kind of bothersome to me. But my main hope is to praise Nassau, they're wonderful, absolutely wonderful teachers. And I work at Hagan, at the SCU, and I love all the Hagan kids. I think Hagan is great, I think the teachers there are great. But please, don't allow anybody else out here insulting Nassau, really students or the teachers, because that's true.
I have two children currently, I have one in kindergarten and one in third grade, and I think that what this other educator, obviously, in our school district brings up a good point is that I personally didn't take what she was saying as insulting Nassau, is that repeatedly when she asked questions of why there were discrepancies, she was given answers by our administration or by our advisory council, that those were the answers presented, which then has been part of this divide. Some of the answers that have been given as to why there are differences in scores and other issues, has, has in essence, divided this group by how it was interpreted. And I think that going forward, everyone needs to be very careful when they're answering academic questions, to not divide the community any more so, because it can seem as if we're imposing judgment on one school or the other. The point that you made very early on, when the gentleman was saying it's $100,000 savings in a $40 million budget, and there's only a portion of it that can be adjusted for the $100,000, that this is a $100,000 savings of, what dollar amount is that, this proportion of? If you said eight, eight percent is mandated by state?
Eighty.
Eighty? What is the dollar amount? What is the dollar amount?
Between, in traction qualifications and it's mandated by state. About eighty percent of the budget is not mandated.
Okay, so somebody, question, what's eighty percent of $40 million?
Eight million. It's around eighty, it's a little less than eighty.
Okay, so there's $8 million of which, this is a $100,000 savings of, because the gentleman's point was, this is a $100,000 savings in a $40 million budget. And you said that's not true, because it's a portion of it that you're allowed to adjust. Correct?
I don't think I quite understand, but what he was getting at was the savings and adjustments.
It was a fraction of the whole picture. And you said that that $40 million is not the whole picture that you get to work with. So my question was, what is the dollar amount you're allowed to work within, $8 million?
No lottery.
Okay, so it's $100,000 savings?
As of right now, I, you know, contraption, like, change, but, but now.
But of eight million, that's, that's what, this?
Roughly.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't realize, I wasn't sure what else came into play, and what percentage of $100,000 needs to be compared against. Was it one million, was it eight million, was it 10 million of the board?
Well, it's roughly, I don't.
The hundred pound?
I don't, yes.
Because I heard eight, I heard eight percent, so forgive me, because I was like, wait, if eight percent is that, then what makes up the rest of it that they can't work?
To me, that, it's comparing it to 1.3, we have to come, that's where I'm, I'm worried there, we gotta come 1.3 or something.
Right. The number that you put up there of the $450,000, that takes into account the after addition of reversing second and fourth grade, including, leaving them in their same schools?
Yes.
So that takes that number, and it's like, I think it was of $90,000. So the $458,000 savings includes that?
Yes.
Okay. As far as transportation, tags or busing is great, as long as these kids have the tags on, and that goes without saying. Tags are worn, it'll be successful. Tags aren't worn, first day of school, my third grader was on the bus, I stand there at the end of my drive-by, they open the door, there's no child. The bus driver looks at me and says, "Did he get on the bus?" And I look at him and go, "Did he get on the bus?" And someone from their office was there monitoring, making sure the kindergarteners got off. His name is Jade Kaden, she was calling Jade instead of Jade Kaden. The kids were instructed not to stand up until the bus stopped and your name was called. So after I very calmly got on the bus and said, "You do not have Jade Kaden on this bus?" And he said, "I'm here." And walking up, I'm like, trying to be calm with a baby in tow, and I said, "Why, did you see the house?" He said, "We weren't allowed to get up till they called my name." And I thought somebody else was on the bus before me. This was with, with a bunch of people from the transportation office on the bus, monitoring the kids and calling their names. So error occurs, it's human error, it's not, it's not anything to be referenced over, or, but it happens. And now we're putting the potential of it happening numerous times in a day, to numerous bands, and making the likelihood greater. As far as your research and... As far as your research and years gone by, I, I think it goes back to that woman being so upset about how, how there's a perception of, of the divide in the district. Forgive me for assuming that if you researched this for three or four years prior to this and you repeated that over and over at our meetings, your researchers and researchers. We were never presented with any type of proposal. And I get the idea of you can't ask for the board and the administration to invest this much time into a, a particular plan. And as a parent, it's the reverse that we look at that and go, how could you not? When you're going to make such a drastic change to our youngest population. And so after researching this for three years, I'm confused why in October, you as experts in administration and, and the board, who we assume have the most collective knowledge, weren't telling us, we have to address in a, in a particular plan that children going into second grade and children going into fifth grade would experience excessive transitions and would have to possibly either do K through two, three through five, or for the first year, people, second graders in Hagan and fourth graders in Nassau. None of that type of information was given to us. And it led for insecurity in what your best interest was. And although we know it is and we know, you repeatedly said it's a tax cap, it's financed, it's imposed by the state. And Mr. Kepa, a letter was drafted, you left the meeting. Um, my husband had requested. And hopefully, people will send that letter in. Because if caps are going to be imposed, aid has to be balanced with that. And the board posted it on the PTA website. Well, it falls to say that it was posted up, going to be posted on the PTA website. You were gracious enough to find the dates for me that I couldn't find any appendixes. These are, and what I'm about to explain to you are the type of things that are, are causing a lot of, um, concern as far as... We were looking for the dates for the orientations. The administration or if the board, whoever set the dates for the K through two orientation, you said it on Hagan's field day, rain date. How you could have half the population of our school, the only time they will ever have a field day together unless you combine the school's field days. Call a K through two orientation to be on a field day rain date is an impossibility. I brought that to the attention of, I think it was Nancy that called me to say that the letter to the state was posted on the PTA website. And I said, while I have you on the phone, the dates you gave me do not, do not work with what's already set up for the field day. I was then told that if field days, rain date would be changed, which is an impossibility because you can't change a field day rain date. And that is what is on my work plan. But the field day rain date would be changed. Long story short, the orientation was then changed to the eleventh. How are we supposed to trust the guide of an administration that is, now that this is going forward, we need to feel that our children's best interests are going to be put first. And from the lowest level to the highest level, we're seeing discrepancies. We're seeing inconsistencies. That, those things, anyone can look in at, at a school calendar to set up dates. If a principal and kindergarten teachers aren't aware of one orientation that is set by an administration that hasn't taken into consideration the preset event for a school, it poses uncertainty. And those are, those are minor things. The biggest concern as far as larger class numbers, in my opinion, is if we're cutting all of these extras, if potentially we're going to cut teaching assistance and enrichment classes. And statistics show across the board that there are issues with transitions. There are issues with grade level schools as far as levels of anxiety and/or rates and, you know, test scores. If we're cutting back support staff, how are we going to counter those stressors? Grade level schools is the only option. I've stated before I oppose it, but if it's the only option going forward, I advocated for less due at the best that it can. However, going forward, we're going to continue to cut all of the extra support that helps offset additional transition stress, larger class sizes. How do we offset those with this type model? If we keep, if we have to cut the other pieces to it?
It's not easy with the budget you're working. And I totally agree, it's going to be very difficult. Um, the larger class sizes, I think are going to be inevitable without grade level schools. Um, that doesn't make it any easier to, to handle. I, I agree.
Larger class sizes would exist, but the children's transitional times within the elementary structure would be less. With that said, you would still have to look at, with larger class sizes, how do we offset the negatives of larger class sizes, whether there's additional transitions or not? And that has to be focused on because this is not, this isn't going to go left. I think we, we as a community have, have to step up and be more active and work with you. Because we all were in shock. I think we're all confused why nine-one-one wasn't put out once, once the tax cap came down and you had taken it off the table. Those of us who started to research it went, oh, okay, it's not a viable option. The people that didn't know that are forward, so it seems rushed to them. There should have been like a red alert put out through this community, through every taxpayer, through every parent, through a potential parent of a child coming into this school district that right now, we need you all at every Board of Ed meeting from September forward, presenting every possible option, like Mr. Friedman presented, that some of the other ones suggested, whether it's grade level schools or not. We've had two or three really solid, different options that the community needed to bring forward then, not after your vote. And, and there needed to be a call from you as the Board of Ed Administration saying, this is urgent, we have no other choice. We need you all here now, we have to do something or we will be forced to do this. And while we're saying to the small population that was here, I was alarmed over the months of how many parents were not aware that this was going on because their kids weren't in school yet. Our family, we trust that, we trust that the board and administration does the highest level of quality for our children, we can start with that. And, and we're all at fault for that. For assuming that, we have to participate as well. I just encourage you that going forward, regardless of what has to be cut, that you're, that you're taking a close look at how you're going to balance any negative effects, whether it's grade level schools or not. Because as, as we cut all the extra things, those inevitably are what are going to balance our children getting through any larger class size or any transition. Um, so that they come out of this, you know, the best that they can.
I'd like to point out some inaccuracies in this plan here, which is a common thing on the website. It current, it states that currently at Hagan, um, that the bus arrival is between eight-twenty-five and eight-thirty. Um, I can tell you because my children are walkers and I'm, I'm at that school every morning before the buses arrive, that the average time buses get there, they're three. They're there usually at eight, eighteen every morning. So we need to consider that in here, that these times are not accurate. Um, the other thing that's in here that's wrong is it says that walkers are dismissed at two-thirty-five. Per the Hagan handbook and the letter that we got in the beginning of the school year, and has been the policy for the last three years that I have had a child in the district, walkers are dismissed at two-fifty. For some reason, this school year, unlike the previous two school years, um, about two-fifty, we get one class that comes out. I don't know which grade it is, it's older kids, maybe because they're fourth graders, I'm not sure. But those of us who have smaller kids, we're waiting there until almost three o'clock every day for our children to come out at Walker. Now, if you're going forward with a plan and a smooth schedule, you need to consider that fact that just because you're saying your kids are going to be dismissed from their classrooms at two-forty-five, this does not mean that they're going to be coming out to their parents at two-forty-five. It's not happening now. I don't believe it's going to happen with the change. Okay? Um, the other thing that, um, was in here that, um, it's been planned as well, was the fact that you're finally pointing out how many families in the district are affected by having one walker in one school and one bus rider in the other school. You spell out that there are only twelve families currently with the current enrollment in this situation, not in Nassau and three in Hagan. I am one of those families in Hagan. And I want to tell you how this is going to affect my family. I will have two choices in the morning to grade level schools. I can make both of my children wait at the bus stop until eight-nineteen. That's my scheduled pickup time. When my younger child will get on a bus that will eventually go to Hagan. But my older child will not be allowed on that same bus. Then I'll have to drop my older child off at Hagan and hope that there's not parking or traffic issues there. Chances are, I will make it to work on time. Meanwhile, my younger child will be taking a ten-minute tour of Hagantown. Her bus will then proceed to the same school where I just dropped my older child off. Then she'll sit on the bus and wait to be transported to Nassau. She will finally arrive at her school twenty-five minutes after we left our house. And I live two-tenths of a mile from my neighborhood school. My other choice is to drop my older child off at Hagan, then proceed to Nassau to drop off my younger child. Since we don't know exactly just if it's a drop-off at Nassau, will we have to park? Will we have a drop-off spot? Will there be traffic issues? Again, I'll be lucky if I get to work on time. In the afternoon, I must be in Hagan to pick up my older child because she is a walker. So I cannot pick up my younger child. She'll be forced to ride the bus home. My choice as a parent, keep my child off the bus, as in taking away for me. I purposely moved in the walker zone because I never plan on putting my kids on a bus. My younger child will not get home from school for half an hour later than my younger child. On top of that, the GLS plan makes it impossible for my mother to help me pick up. She currently gets on my children twice a week so that I can work longer hours in the office to meet my four-hour work schedule. So this leaves me with very few choices. Do I put my kids in before and after school care and to help manage the schedule? Do I go thank my employer to go part-time at my job and risk my job security in this fragile economy? Do I look into private schools so my kids can continue to go to school together? No matter what choice I make, my family will be forced into a situation that will come with financial burden. And this takes away from money that could be saved for college. The worst part of this transportation issue for my family is that I will be riled with thirty to forty minutes with my younger child every school day. And I can tell you that that may not seem like a lot of time to you, but as a working mother, thirty to forty minutes a day with my children is a lot. And this all may sound like a sad story to you, but this will become my reality. I'm not talking about a migrating unit for three weeks. I'm talking about a major disruption to my schedule. All, all the while, I'm expected as a parent and resident of this district to put on a happy face and support this plan. Please tell me if you could support this plan if your family was affected, if my family was affected. I also, um, just want to bring up one other point about what I talked about about the current situation in Hagan. I want to know what the plan is for parents who decide to start dropping off their kids before the eight-twenty arrival time. Because today, in the handbook and the rules for Hagan, you're not supposed to drop off till eight-thirty. I go every day before eight-thirty. Why? Because I want a parking spot that I can get out of that parking lot before the buses. Because if I don't, I will be fifteen minutes to work late. Because we waited at Hagan like three, four, five, six cycles of lights to get out from behind all the buses. So I go early, I wait in the lobbies with my kids. I'm there every day. Mrs. Kina sees me, um, Mrs. L sees me, all the teachers. They greet my children every day. I love that time of the morning with my kids there in lobby. But I wait until they tell me that I can let my kids go down to their classrooms at eight-thirty. But I can tell you that every single day, and I've been in this school district for three years now, that there are parents that drop off their kids and just leave them there. What's going to happen with those kids whose parents are going to drop off earlier than eight-twenty? It's going to happen. Why? Because parents have to manage this schedule, especially families with two working parents. If they want to drive old kids to school, they have to figure out how to do that. If a new one's dropping off before eight-twenty, where are those kids going to go?
As you said, there are parents who are doing that now. And the schools have accommodated that. They would continue to do so.
How are they counting? Do these kids sit in lobbies? They don't go anywhere and have instructor activity or prep time or go to the library or anything. They sit in the lobby.
That is what would happen if they get there before eight-twenty. I mean, that's why they make it clear what the drop-off time is. You know, that it's not the ideal situation, but they ask for cooperation because they only have staff there at a certain time. And they hope that the parents will comply. If they don't, the safest thing they can do under the circumstances is to sit them where they can be seated on the office.
And I always remember, they can sit on the office. I'm there every day, I know.
Your turn. Thank you. Lady, you're hearing me out. I'm thinking about, um... So, so I'm getting a understanding, this GLS versus non-GLS decision, this was based on numbers. Is that correct, you understand?
I don't know. Not totally for me, but part of it, yes.
All right, good. So you know, you could look at the numbers, you know, obviously, some of the presenters just gave off and it would be... They had a moving expression, please believe, it was a very moving expression. We'll talk about it. Clearly, from the numbers perspective, uh, if I remember the numbers correctly, technology budget perspective, you have three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Is that a right number? Technology budget, the amount of money that is spent on maintaining the computers and the people that are hired to maintain the computer?
I don't remember offhand.
Okay, it's three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, depending off by a couple of thousands here and there. But my bigger question here is, if I come up with ideas that can reduce the three thirty-seven to significantly a lower number, is that an idea that they will completely just stop?
I won't discuss anything that would be just cost.
So, so my point here is, I'm not going to get into elaboration of what I'm actually trying to propose because I don't need to pay for everybody. But three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for four people maintaining the technology infrastructure in a school district, we appear to be fine, okay. That's fine, fine is okay by me. But if I come up with a proposal that saves some amount of money, I think that should be considered. And I can assure you that, that it can add up into overall savings for the next number of years. Because the way I see it, I mean, I don't know all the fine details about it, but the way I see it, I think spend is more than return. So, having said that, when, I think, uh, you brought it up, eleventh March, coffee with the board. Is that the date when the coffee is going to happen or the discussion is going to happen? Or is that the date when the letter is going to go out?
That's the date for the actual coffee. The letter's going out by Friday.
So is it, is it correct, you understand, that till then, there is no decision made? There's nothing that's happening for not proceeding with GLS, non-GLS budget?
GLS has already been voted for and passed, so it has, it is proceeding and...
So you just said, you just said a very interesting thing, that GLS versus non-GLS was partly based on numbers, right? So even if I have to look at partly based on numbers, then I'm getting this math. Partly based on numbers, the decision is not confirmed, is that correct?
Which is...
You, you just said, I asked you, it's a GLS versus non-GLS. That decision purely based on numbers, you said partly. So that decision is still not...
In my, it's partly based on numbers. It's not partly made, the decision is made.
If I come up with some more numbers to help people look at the budget, uh, in a bigger way, is there a possibility we can actually still consider some of the decisions and go back to the drawing board and make a better decision?
You have to do that. You have to vote. We still accept your, your help for getting the budget better.
So what you want to actually be saving money on the budget of GLS? A lot of people here are...
We still need a million dollars.
What's that?
We still need a million dollars. Because we do for next year.
Every single penny, just like the way I'm coming up with a technology proposal, a lot many other people have talked with many other proposals. And I'm pretty sure there is a way to do things a little differently. Do you agree?
Yes, and we'll be happy to look, look at all kinds of this, even if you come up with this one. We need to make a budget by...
So the answer is, we will look at any useful way to save money. And that will help us, especially if it's less of a burden than doing something else. So it may not change grade levels or something. It may help reduce, um, class size. It may save enrichment future. It may be one of the myriad of other cuts that we're going to have to make this year.
So the way I understand, so... So, the way I understand, so I think it's one part of GLS versus non-GLS is another part. Is that okay, if you understand?
Well, GLS was made a decision to know how much additional we're going to have to cut from the budget. So GLS comes to four round numbers, and we kind of cut up these three. So that still leaves a good chunk of change to need to reduce this year to get to our tax cap. So, anything from anywhere that might be a better option than somewhere else is always viable and would be very welcome.
So like Dr. Willoughby, you just mentioned that that decision's already made, tracked out, stopped.
It's been voted on, and...
Okay, so I think...
Which, why we don't have to report.
Right, so I think a lot of people around here, I think a lot of people are presenting a lot of alternatives, as well as thoughts and sharing opinions about GLS. I really think that, you know, you guys are literally telling us there's no room for that, is that, that's what I'm saying, is that?
About GLS?
Yeah.
Two, two months ago, we approved GLS, and based on that approval, we came up with a detailed plan on how to improve the GLS.
Okay.
The purpose tonight was to have input on the plan, to see if there is any thing that we may have mis-elected or ideas on how to improve it. And again, I say this nearly every meeting, everybody puts at a plan from a different angle, and it's a personal angle, and sometimes they have some very good ideas about how to improve that. And that is why we wanted this up on the website two weeks ago, and we postponed the meeting, we had the meeting, but we just do this. Until this week was so people could get a look at that and take a look and come back with ideas on the plan and how it might better be improved. So there were some of those types, and those we'll take a look at. The one I specifically mentioned with, you know, the kindergarten piece at Hagan, is definitely something that can be looked at. I can't say what's going to happen with it, but my board members aren't here, we just received information tonight on it. So that, that is definitely a piece that could change, doesn't mean it will, just means it could. There's some other questions on high need, drop-overs and things, we'll take a look at those and see if we can refine that, make it better. So the idea was to improve the plan, but GLS was voted on and approved two months ago.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Mr. Gray, 2:30, 2:40, I have a couple of questions for you. As a chairman, you were in the coat, and he was asking about a referendum. You never answered yes or no, it would be possible. Is it yes or no?
Is it possible? I, I don't see any legal reason against it, but I would not support it.
Second was, you, Chair, people in the committee, you haven't even decided what options, how to trigger budget. And after hearing the options which were presented, you made this decision. Now, can I ask you if you had actuaries and accountants that gave you a synopsis of what you need to cut, and they told you the options that you needed to look at? One of those options you chose, the GLS, you mean this is a grade school, what number? That was what you chose from the options they gave?
No, there, there's a list of options that continue to be under discussion for additional cuts to make the $1.3 million.
Okay, wait, did you have any actuaries, accountants?
Business manager.
You have a $40 million budget, who's the actuary?
I don't have an actuary, I have a business manager.
And he handles the budget for the entire school?
Yes, she does.
I think not you. I thought that something, really involved, you had these two accountants are free, who would handle the books and say to you, "Okay, this is where you can cut, this is where you can, you know, apply," and this...
I get flack over month, every month about having one, so I, I can only tell you that, that, that wouldn't fly.
Well, if I was sitting there, I go to the doctor, I'm finding, finding, I go to the accountant, and it seems to be, they're sick here. And you're making a decision without having professionals give you that info.
She, a professional, and she does that as the only...
And these are also educational decisions made by educational professionals.
That she was the sole person giving the advice.
I was also, I get advice from the principals.
Are you in the council?
No, I am not, but I'm an education professional.
I need to have that data information regarding the cuts for the $1.3 million.
Yes.
That formula is based on the state formula or the tax cap. I went over that formula at a board meeting back in November, when the tax cap first came out, but I'm going to use that with them, with the board, with our, you know, external monitors, we have internal monitors, it's been being applied as well.
And did you give the board a presentation, what did you give to them?
I gave the board a presentation.
Did you have a selection of places to cut the money from in lieu of going with the GLS, or other places that that money could have? So you did have choices?
And we haven't yet.
And, and we, we still have to make more, because it has to add up to one point.
Well, looking a little projective here, down the road three years, what happens now?
That's where the three-year proposal is in place?
Yes, but you've already capitalized and suggested, if you take the money that you have now as consolidation for grades, and you use it now for the next three years, what happens three years down the road from that? There's no more money to take.
Something else has to happen.
Well, couldn't we address that now?
Maybe.
Instead of addressing it in three years, when it collapses, you've got all the kids who go to grade, couldn't you address it now?
I don't know what is...
The options that you're looking at, you didn't look at all of the options, surely you couldn't really provide it where you are now?
No, we looked at a lot of options, and this is part of the decision. There will be a...
Was it possible to share that with the rest of the...
It, it's on the presentation for the budget cuts.
On the website, it's on the presentation.
It's been done as a presentation, it's been done two months running.
It's been done for a couple of years, actually, many of the cuts that are, are cuts that have been discussed for two or three years.
Is it proposed that's for cuts?
Yes, proposed. And a lot of times, we take them from previous years, because we didn't have to enact them in previous years, and it's still a possibility, viable possibility for a current year, we need to reduce the budget. Our dilemma is, we've got to stop reducing budgets and get a viable solution that funds the district without having to cut, because you can only cut for so long. We, we happen to be, if you want to call it lucky, in the sense that we are having declining enrollment. If we didn't have declining enrollment, it would be a real problem right now.
Well, I have two things to say, and I would sit there. I've lived here in this area for years. One, I would make sure that you have insurance policy to cover the problems that could be incurred by this transition, because if one child gets harmed or any one of those lost, we're going to sue, not tax record. That's one. And number two is, I think that you should have more professionals, even if it's an expense, to come in and look at alternate options for the school districts. Of course, $3,000, $5,000, that's the professional that you need now.
Emily Coler, please, before. You all heard from me, I've known him, and so you all know that I am adamantly opposed to it. And you've heard every reason that I have, or were to say it by everybody, and obviously, everybody's kind of dug in their heels, I can see that. But, so my question to you is, my understanding is that the budget normally passes by about 75 to 150 people. You have 800 people who have said no to you. So when you present this first budget for the first time, and it includes GLS and it fails, what is your plan for the second budget?
We will have to do further cuts.
As opposed to realizing that the community is opposed to it, and simply making the choices based on what the community wants instead of what three people want?
If I pull that out, then I have to...
Do the community want?
Make further cuts.
Be responsible to it, or you can just be responsible to the community members?
And maybe even hundreds of thousands of dollars more, because you can't go...
But you don't have to actually do that.
You can't go back with the same budget.
You can.
Well, you can.
Right, and you could change from GLS to neighborhood schools and keep the same... Oh, there would be logic, because this is what the taxpayers are saying, this is what the democracy is saying. Your proposed budget is not what we want. 800-plus people have signed that. So my question is, what are the chances that the budget, that those 800 people being against it is going to pass? And is that going to be enough of a wake-up call for the board that we want to take control of the district back?
Let's see what the budget is, we don't even know what the budget is yet, we have to come up with all cuts yet, and then we'll present it, and if it's the case, then we'll have to come up with all cuts to bring it down to a level that people accept.
Well, I'm not talking about people who say no based on the amount that you're asking for, I'm talking about the people who are planning to say no because of GLS. People who are saying, "The budget represents GLS, and therefore, that's not what I want. That's not what I, as a taxpayer, as a parent, support, and therefore, I'm saying no." That doesn't mean that you can't come back for the $2.2 or whatever it is that we're allowed to have under the cap. It just means I'm saying no, and that I don't want you to take control of the district away from the people in the district. And I've heard that from many, many people who are planning to vote no as a message to the three people who have decided to change a lot of lives. And my question is, well, what are you going to do?
Can I interject for just a second? I understand all emotions, you know how I feel. You have to really step aside, and at this point in your life, start to take your emotions away from this. I understand that you're extremely distraught about the grade-level schools, but look in the big picture of voting no. If you do vote no, the only people that you are hurting is your children.
That's only you that's continuing with cuts.
If you want to give me a minute, I gave you all the time in the world, and I, just give you a minute and I'll explain myself. If you vote no, and you have every right to do so, every right, I don't know how I go to Hudson, your shoe's looking, I have the information, I've seen it.